Next up on the agenda is a Lincoln Elementary School presentation. Principal Brianne Hearn along with students and staff. Welcome.
Good evening. Well, first of all, we'd like to say thank you so much for inviting us to share our excitement over our school. My name is Brianne Hearn. I'm the principal at Lincoln Elementary. And with me today, I have my administrative intern, Shelley Gilmore, and our academic coach, Todd Peterson, and a few very excited and maybe a little nervous young scholars that are going to present as well. And a small secret for you all, I'm a little nervous too. Okay. We're going to start out by just sharing with you a little bit about who we believe Lincoln is. So, we believe Lincoln is a small, caring community that provides access for all. We opened in 1949, and currently, we have about 320 students in attendance. In addition, we also are hosting one of our early childhood voluntary pre-K programs, and we have 15 students in attendance for that as well. Lincoln is a diverse body, bringing multiple perspectives. We have many cultures represented in our building, including about 74% to 75% students of color. Lincoln is a global voice representing our broader St. Cloud area community. We have eight home languages that are represented in our small building, and so many of our students are coming to us by tri and multilingual. Lincoln is a family with a growth mindset focused on strengths of our students. Our students are coming to us with many strengths regardless of what might be perceived as some challenges in their lives, as you can see by the data on your screen. Although, what we see is we see students who are coming with a deep connection to the arts, with curiosity, independence, out-of-the-box thinking, global cynicism and tenacity. We'd like to share with you at this time, our Lincoln Proud video. Lincoln Elementary is a small, close-knit community right in the heart of St. Cloud. We work very hard to forge connections among all of our students, staff, and families, with our number-one goal being that all families and students feel represented and cared for in our building.
I love the great community sense. I love the great fact that we're such a small school with such small class sizes. It really gives us the opportunity to really engage the students one-on-one, along with our technology, which really gives us the opportunity to give them tools to engage their learning as well.
Every day I come to Lincoln, I'm so excited to see the kids in the hallway. They approach me in the hall asking, "What are we going to learn about?" And what's fun is, they want to know what -- what they're saying is, they want to know what challenging activity they're going to be doing today.
We have such a caring staff. The community is awesome, and we're always looking out for one another, and we're always looking out for the students that we have. We have a terrific, small student body, and we're able to really start working with them, meeting their needs, and it's just a great community, a great feeling to show up to work every day.
I love the co-teaching model here at Lincoln Elementary. It's nice to have someone come in for that full 16-minute literacy block. It helps with teaching the students different comprehension strategies, as well as developing their skills. It's also nice to have her in the classroom because she helps with the stations that we do in our classroom.
We here at Lincoln really value social-emotional learning competencies for our students, and we do a really nice job finding out if our students are needing extra support socially, emotionally, and we have a group of people here at Lincoln that work to meet the needs of those students, whether those are interventions within the classroom, sometimes interventions outside of the classroom, et cetera. We have a good team here for that. We're lucky to have a full-time counselor here. A lot of elementaries don't have that, and which gives us the opportunity to help kids to learn how to deal with feelings, learn how to build positive friendships, and how to solve problems in a positive way, so that they love school and they do well in the school. And so, we have lots of opportunities for small groups, for class lessons, and for helping parents to connect to community resources, if that's something that they need.
I also work with the students and to help them resolve their problems and challenges that they face in the school. We do help, also teaches, and other school staff, so we can bridge the cultural gap that exists.
The orchestra program at Lincoln is an opportunity for 5th grade students to learn violin, viola, cello, bass. They get smaller group lessons twice a week and put on several concerts throughout the year. They can participate in the orchestra all the way through graduation of high school, and they get their start here at Lincoln.
My favorite thing about Lincoln are the students here. I love working with the families, and our staff are positive, they're compassionate, and they are really driven to help our students learn.
I want students to feel comfortable with their school and proud of what they are creating. I want them to show it off to their peers, and I want them to develop that "aha" sense that I can do whatever I want to do.
You know, I love coming here. The attitudes of everybody are always positive. I think my favorite part about Lincoln is that, how supportive we are, not just of the students, but of each other.
I love working at Lincoln because they have very great staff who are helpful.
Lincoln Proud.
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 So, as we move into our presentation tonight, we'd like to take a little time to explain to you our journey to where we are today. We have some data to share with you briefly that will give you some pieces of information about our students, and then the rest of our presentation will kind of really wrap around the whole child. Currently, at Lincoln, we've got about 21.5% students who are receiving services for EL, which has been on the rise. We did not see a large population of EL in our building until 2014. We are just over 90% students with free or reduced-price lunches, and you can see historically, we have been around that number as well. Students at Lincoln who receive special education services is nearing that 20% mark right now. And a quick overview of our MCA performance. You can see the trends linking being the orange bar. You can see that we've had a significant increase in reading scores from 2015 to 2016, and that increase actually brought our building off the continuous improvement watch list, which was a huge success. So, these are just a piece of the story. We'd also like to share with you some information about growth for our MCA reading. You can see that in 2015, 27% of our students had high growth, and this is for 4th and 5th grade, since 3rd grade is their first testing opportunity. And in 2016, we bumped that up extremely to 41% of our students receiving or earning high growth. A state average is about 30%, so that was significantly above the state. The growth demonstrated by our black students in 2015 was 24%, whereas in 2016, we saw a nice jump again to 42%. And at Lincoln, we're working very hard to implement high-impact instructional strategies to specifically target our racial achievement gap, but what we're finding out is that those strategies are just good strategies for all of our students. In this slide, you can see that when you look at the proficiency of white students with MCA reading, from 2015 to 2016, we saw significant gains even going up above the St. Cloud district average and nearing the state average within two points. When we look at math, we unfortunately did see a small dip in our math scores last year, jumping down to 42% proficiency. However, when you look at growth of our 4th and 5th graders, once again, we're seeing a tremendous amount of high and medium growth, well over the state average. So, this summer, our leadership team got together, and knowing all of that information and those pieces of data, we determined a target page that is used to really guide our vision and our goals for this year. That target page has an overall goal of, "Our Lincoln School family values a culture of academic and personal growth that fosters success for all." This target page became our why behind our work, and within that target page, we have four priority goals, seeing as the target page is our goal over the next few years. Those four goals were the ones that we really wanted to tackle this year. Our overall goal for this year was to go from that 42% proficiency up to over 50%, and so, we decided that the best way to say that is tipping the scales for student achievement.
And good evening, Chairman Dolgren, Board Superintendent Jett. Like Principal Hearn said, I'm Todd Peterson. I'm the academic coach over at Lincoln, and I'm just going to share priority goal number one from that target page, and that goal states, "We value collaboration and can learn from one another." And so, this evening, we engage in a lot of collaborative activities over at Lincoln, and I just want to focus on a few that we have found to be very successful, working within our teachers, building the collaboration model, and then seeing that success then funnel down into our students. The first one is our data teams, and we engage in our data teams three times each month. And in those grade-level teams, teachers come together, and they analyze data that they've gathered from teacher-created assessments, and then those assessments have been built off of priority standards that they identified early in the year, and they're using these pre- and post-test assessments to gather data around, "How can we build on student strengths? What are those student strengths? How can we bring other students up to then also share those same strengths?" Another piece of our collaboration is the Wednesday morning leadership team meetings, and in these teacher-led meetings, teachers come together and they share initiatives that they want to bring forward to the school. Among those, we have our family engagement team and PBS team, and those are going to be focused on a little bit more in future slides, but these are teachers coming together with ideas to then share out to the larger school community. Next up, we have our teacher-led professional development, and this is an opportunity for us to develop and share the genius in the building that's already there. This is an opportunity for the three of us to step back and then to allow teachers to bring what they've had in their own professional development, their own teaching background, and then share in these sessions that staff then go to. This is a way that we can share the knowledge in the building. This is the way that teachers can create a culture that they want to see other practices taking place. And finally, we have our co-teaching model, and co-teaching takes place every day in the classroom for that one hour of our literacy block. And then, we also come together once a month, and we share in a professional development and planning session, and these sessions go for two hours for every grade level. And we always start with a piece of data, and so, I want to share the last piece of our coaching, co-teaching, by focusing on the student and teacher growth, and these are the exact same slides and images that you might see if you were to come to one of our co-teaching sessions. The first part there in the upper right-hand corner is the teacher growth, and this is data compiled from a teacher self-assessment around one of the facets of co-teaching. And so, in September, when teachers first came together, if you can see closely there, they're in the beginning of the developing phase. This is how they felt about their co-teaching practice, and when we came back to December, and even if we looked at when they came back to us in February, you can see that teachers are feeling much more comfortable around areas of co-teaching. Then, the last piece there focuses on the student growth side, and once a month, our students are taking progress monitoring tests, and this is another way for us to gather data to see how teacher or student development is coming along. And so, we look at students that aren't proficient in their fall and their winter benchmarks. And you'll see that from early on in November, going all the way then through February, more and more of our students that weren't proficient, yet those benchmarks are now meeting proficiency. And we ended last session in February with 70% of our students that were initially not proficient, meeting high and rigorous growth goals.
I'm Shelley Gilmore. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm the administrative intern at Lincoln. Our priority goal, too, is we model a growth mindset and encourage the achievement of rigorous goals. Not only are we concerned about academics, we are concerned about the whole child at Lincoln. So, we have several social-emotional supports for our students, as well as academic supports. And the picture you see up there right now is of our 3rd graders ice skating at the MAC this week. Research tells us that the only path to learning is through students feeling safe, students feeling loved and supported, and students being ready to learn. And what we do at Lincoln is we really focus to make sure that students are on that path. So, we make sure that each of our teachers has predictable routines, procedures, and expectations, especially for our students who come to school with challenges that they may face at home, they can feel safe at school. Also, it's really important that we provide connections with adults, meaningful relationships, and a meaning and purpose for each child to be a part of the class and to be a part of our school community, to help them feel loved and to help them feel supported. With this, when our students feel safe, and when our students feel loved, they are then ready to learn. Every day, we start out our day with our Lincoln pledge, and I would like to invite our students to lead us in our pledge. I am talented, smart, and successful. I have dreams and goals. I will work hard. I am safe, kind, and will do my best. I am an all-star. So, this is an affirmation that we use every day to help students put on their scholarly hat and be ready to learn. The picture that we're showing up there is showing things that we do around mindfulness. So, we have a curriculum that's called Mind Up, where it focuses on breathing, it focuses on working through frustration, it focuses on being ready to learn. I'd like to share some of our PBIS data to date. You can see the green zone. These are our students that have zero-to-one discipline referrals. The goal is for, is to be in that 80% range. You can see yellow zone, students with two to five discipline referrals, and the red zone, students with six or more discipline referrals. The problem with this graph is that once a student has more than six office discipline referrals, that doesn't change throughout the year. If they got six in the first two weeks, they continue to have six, and they show up as a red student. So, it's important that you understand that we, again, educate the whole child, and we have 41 students right now that are on individual plans, that are helping them develop the skills that they're lacking, that might be skills in dealing with frustration, skills in understanding the word "no" and accepting the word "no." So, for each of those students, we build those skills so they are ready to learn. We have proactive breaks, we have skill groups, we have check-in, check-out, developing relationship with specific people in the building, so they feel safe, they feel loved, and they are ready to learn. And those with interventions are showing a decrease in their office discipline referrals. So, when you take a look at the next graph here, from September to November, we had 644 discipline referrals. When you check out another chunk of time, from December to February, we moved to 327. And in March, if you were to bring that up to three months, we are still below. So, the interventions and skill work that we're having to help the whole child be able to be safe, be loved, and ready to learn are really making a difference. And now, I would like to turn it over to our Young Scholars program.
So, as our Young Scholars come on up to join me, I'll give you some information about the program at Lincoln. So, at Lincoln, we have 75 students who participate in Young Scholars, and what that looks like for our K1, 2 students is about 30 minutes weekly, and our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students participate for about 90 minutes weekly. Their focus is on growth mindset, critical thinking skills, and just recently, our 4th graders here have started working on peer mentoring. So, I'm going to ask them to come up. I've got Emily will introduce an activity, and she's going to test your growth mindset tonight.
We are excited to introduce the Teaching Kids to Struggle Challenge. It's a paper folding and cutting activity that will help you understand the concept of struggling when things are difficult. We will hand out scissors, a paper each of you, along with a model for you to recreate. By the way, you cannot touch the model. You will be given 90 seconds to attempt this task. During this time, we will observe. Good luck.
Just as a reminder, you are not to touch the model, Mr. Ganji. Can we see a thumbs up if you are ready to begin? You may begin.
One more time with directions, please.
Emily, one more time. I don't know if they were listening.
We will hand out the scissors and paper to each of you, along with a model for you to recreate.
So, recreate that model. You have about 40 seconds. 10 seconds. All right, we will stop. Put your materials down. Okay, you may have noticed, our Young Scholars here were walking around, and they were listening to what was coming out of your mouth to find growth mindset phrases. Anybody have an example of a growth mindset phrase?
Did I do it?
Anything else? We may need to work on growth mindset. So, before they head out, I wonder if the four of you could share with us, how does growth mindset help you in the classroom?
Even if you struggled, you tried.
Even though some of you might have got it wrong, you tried.
So, Emily has one last message for you, and we'll wrap up our growth mindset activity. Oh, I'm sorry, Kamora has one message.
Thank you for participating in this challenge. As you can tell, this was difficult, and you can now imagine what it might feel like to be a student, to be a student in the classroom when learning is a struggle. In Young Scholars, we learn how to overcome these obstacles through positive thinking and growth mindset.
Thank you so much. You did an awesome job. You can get your materials. I know Ms. Conway will want them back tomorrow. Do you, would you like to keep your model? We could allow them to keep their model. As they are collecting their models, we'd like to share with you some interesting information about our Young Scholars at Lincoln. They are definitely focused on that growth mindset, and like they said, they've been working on, "What do you do when you hit a challenge in learning?" And what we found interesting, coming back to some academic data, is that 76% of our students in our Young Scholars program meet or exceed star-reading growth expectations of 40% or higher, which is an accelerated growth goal for kids. So, 76% of these students, and overall, we're at about 58% of all of our Lincoln students. So, they are just doing an awesome job. Thank you. Our third priority goal is that learners will set goals and monitor progress toward achievement of these goals. Some of the ways that we're doing that at Lincoln, like Mr. Peterson said, are our data teams. We're also participating in those co-teaching monthly meetings. Most recently, though, we did what we call teacher talks, and the way that looked at Lincoln, all 16 of our classroom teachers had a homework assignment. Their children were very excited to hear that, and their homework assignment was to be prepared for their teacher talk with their "Why am I an educator?" statement. So, when they came in, we started out with their "Why do I do this?" statement, and moved out to "How do I want to show up for kids every day?", and then moved into the "What are we going to do to support the students in my classroom?" You can see there's a poster of all of their handwritten "why" statements, and when we put them all together, the bigger the word, the more often we saw it. These are their "why" statements all as one. Our last priority goal for this year is to build trusting collaborative relationships among all stakeholders, students, staff, families, and community. We've done a number of things to reach this goal this year, participated in a welcome audit, where we invited in several community members and parents to walk through the building and give us feedback on how we're doing. We've hosted a second round of Parents in Action, where we had nearly 30 graduates this year, and you can see their photo of a few of our graduates. We've had many family engagement events, including in the bottom left, you'll see a photo of a kindergarten classroom event for parents. The top right, you'll see that our students were asked to sing at the dedication of the Lincoln statue downtown St. Cloud, and in the bottom right, you'll see a group of Apollo athletes that came over to read to our students in the classroom. So, as we kind of wrap up what we've talked about today, Lincoln is a building that was built in 1949, and in the year of 1949, the doors opened, and a young mother dropped her child off at the doors, five years old. her child off at the doors, five years old, and walked that child in. And I had the pleasure yesterday of meeting this young mother. She's 100 years old, will be 101 soon. And I'd like to just share with you some information that was in a follow-up email from her son regarding her visit. My mother and I talked about it at lunch, we came to the realization that this is a unique Lincoln story. Mom marveled at all the changes that represent the present, but we also shared remembrances of the same spirit of teaching and learning that were part of her parental experiences and my student experiences. The spirit of Lincoln is just as evident today as it was nearly 70 years ago. Thank you for permitting mother and son a chance to share and reminisce once again important memories of a school that was so foundational and transformational in the lives of a young mother and her children so long ago. Those same lessons and experiences are shaping the lives of a new generation of students, teachers, and parents today. We want to thank that young mother for coming back to visit us and her wonderful son, who happens to be our school board liaison. Mr. Mo shared with me when I first met with him regarding Lincoln, that the message of Lincoln is, you can get there from here. You can get there from here. Such a simple message, and I want to say that to my young scholars that are with us tonight, you can get there from here, wherever there is. And we've got a member here, we have an honorary t-shirt to thank you for your visit last night, and we really appreciate your time tonight, letting us talk about how proud we are to be Lincoln Elementary.
Does anyone have any questions for Breon? Jeff?
I just have two things. Breon, I want to commend you guys on the work you're doing for your discipline stuff. Keep up the good work, and you're going to put me out of a job.
That's our goal.
Yeah, that's a good goal. Second thing, please educate me, I noticed on one of your slides, it says 7.5% homelessness. What does that mean?
Those are students who have identified themselves in a category of maybe transitional housing or not currently in a permanent residence.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Jerry?
I'm going to say a few words in support of our legislative people and connected to Lincoln. You know, I've noticed that all across the school district, we're showing these dramatic improvements in reading. And they, this cuts across racial and ethnic lines, it cuts across poverty and non-poverty. And our superintendent put, asked us to put a ton of resources into the, into reading, professional staff development, for co-teaching, for people that we might have thought, five or six or seven years ago, teaching coaches, people would say, why do you need a teaching coach? The teachers are supposed to know how to teach, they have their degree. And all of these things together, and the change in the curriculum, and what's going on in the curriculum department, and Lori Posh and those folks, all of those things require working smarter, and you're working smarter, you can feel that you're working smarter, but they also require the counselors, the support people who are bringing kids back when they're, when they're struggling, the coaching and all of that. And this year in the legislature, we've got to move to cut back on the support for schools with, to delink the increases in educational support for compensatory education. We've got people who are saying that, you know, we've kind of been too generous in the growth of, of the formula, and let's put that money into giant tax cuts and so on. But I just, I just wish that those people would come and see, because people say, oh, they're just throwing money at it, but what you're doing is not just throwing money at it, but you're using bright people and doing things in a different way, and we're seeing now, year over year over year in reading, we're seeing year over year, these huge gains that are coming from the money, plus the curriculum changes, plus the staff additions, plus, plus working smarter. And, you know, I just really would hate to see, we've had some good years now where we've gotten support from the legislature, I just really, this is really something that, that is really Bruce's mission to pass along, that let's, let's keep it up, let's, let's not go backwards and lose faith at the legislature that, that we can make a difference for kids like you are. So thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and to the kids, yeah, go keep up with that work, and I love the scholars, and that was fun. So you forgot to say that, because I think that that was very fun. I have a question for you. I was looking at the makeup of your school, and I wanted to ask you about the makeup of your staff, and what challenges you have there, and what requests do you have for administration and, and the board, looking towards the future? Could you explain, could you talk about that, please?
Right. You know, our staff would, would probably mirror most of our district, with the majority of our teachers being white teachers. We, we do have some staff members who are from other cultures than, than that, but, but honestly, that is something that we struggle with, with finding and hiring. You know, I'm hopeful that some of the licensure programs or some alternative pathways to being an educator will help with that, but it definitely is something that we look at every year and wonder, what can we do better? It did come up in our welcome audit, our families recognize, you know, the staff doesn't look like the students here, and so we're hopeful that we can do whatever we need to do to support those alternative pathways to licensure, so that there are opportunities available that maybe weren't there before.
Follow-up. But I'd like you to go a little bit deeper if you can, and if you cannot, or maybe you need to think about it, that's, that's okay. But, but I'd like you to explain to us better, why is that important? If you have an example or something that, that comes to mind about, that, that really gets to fill in our hearts, why do we need that?
You know, I think the statement that you heard me say at the beginning of the video, we want our children to feel like they're represented, they want, we want our kids to feel like they see themselves, and to bring in multiple cultures and, and lenses to the work that we're doing, so that we're really seeking out a bigger perspective for all kids. So every kid comes and says, I see me here, you know, and, and I, I think that, for me, that's, that's the big, the umbrella. I don't know, does that answer somewhat?
Bruce Sanchez?
Good, I would just like to echo what has been said, and say congratulations on an excellent presentation, and on the enthusiasm that all three of you showed in making that presentation. Enthusiasm is contagious, and certainly, the research shows that the leadership of a school is vital to the success of that school. It's vital to the climate of a school. And I think that you showed, you know, just by your presentation tonight, the enthusiasm that you bring to your job, and that it rubs off on your students also. So, great job with that. I would want to add one thing, you mentioned that your Lincoln singers were, sang at the unveiling of the Lincoln statue downtown, while they also sang at the Leaf Night of the Stars in February, and they did a fabulous job with Ms. Susan Jeany, your director, and, and the students had a great deal of enthusiasm, and were just really well received by the crowd. So, great job, and I know that at least one of the singers is with you tonight, so just make sure you pass on the congratulations to that group. A couple of them are, I guess. Okay, good.
They wanted noted that it would be three.
There's three, okay, great. Well, great job, you guys.
Thank you.
Willie Jett?
And pardon me for my voice at the moment, but I wanted to echo something or piggyback something that Mr. Hinch just said. One of the things that he mentioned was, leadership matters. Okay, and he said, leadership matters. And Principal Hearn is in her first year as the interim principal at Lincoln, and so it was a no-brainer for us as a district administration, when with her staff, and you read it recently, that it was a no-brainer for us to take that interim tag off and make her the permanent principal at Lincoln Elementary. And she's done a wonderful job in her first year, and we're just pleased that she has accepted the permanent position at Lincoln Elementary.
With gusto, very happy to serve.
Bruce Smalls?
Mr. Chair, it's always a risk, isn't it, to talk last after such wonderful testimonies from my, my colleagues? But I'm just wanting to express something here deeply. Education, education's a calling. It's a profession, we work at it, it's a job, it's a career, but it's a calling. And required in callings is a deep, deep love and commitment to what we do. And I recall so much, I remember when you spoke at the beginning of your presentation about Lincoln being a small, caring community, providing access for all. It reminded me then, and I would beg the indulgence of my colleagues on the board, that every one of us has a journey in our life, and, and you spoke so well about telling your students that you can get there from here, here being Lincoln, and there being where they want to go. But I can just say by experience, I got here where I am because I was there where you were. And that journey was a journey started 49 years ago. And as the video showed, this young boy, five years old, and a young mother, 33 at the time, the first of three sons, that she walked up to the door of Lincoln, and as all mothers do, turned over her children, in a very difficult moment for mothers and fathers, turned over those children to a caring, loving staff a long time ago. They are all gone now. But all of the teachers and staff and, and parents that are part of the Lincoln community now are continuing that culture and climate of success and achievement. And if I can just, just show some emotion about this, because you can't do this without You can't be on that journey, young ladies and gentlemen, and any one of us, you can't be on a journey in life and do it alone. You've just got to do it with other people. I was in the hallway after my mother, I, I very intentionally left the room, left my mother with the two of you, because you should talk as mothers and as parents, didn't need to have me hanging out in there. I'd done my job and got my dear mother to you. I was walking in the halls and just, just minding my own business, of course, I know how to walk the halls and not be doing anything but just politely looking in and, and taking in the atmosphere. One of your young employees, Jama Mohammed, was walking down the hall with a young boy, and he saw me, and he came right up to me, just broke free from Jama, and came up to me and said, do you know that I have a grandmother that's 100 years old and she lives in Africa? And I got down on my knee so I could look him right in the eye, and I says, that's wonderful. Do you want to know something else? There's another 100-year-old lady, and she's in that room right over there. I think I can introduce her to you, do you want to meet her? And he was delighted. And Jama and this young boy walked into your office, Breon, and this young boy just walked right up to this elderly woman and said, my grandma is 100, and she lives in Africa. And my mother said, I'm 100, and I live right here in St. Cloud. And they both embraced each other, and it was a tender moment. But it reminds us that every one of us profits from the time and the talent and the treasure that we put into our children. We profit by these children. And we often say that time, talent, and treasures, those words start with T, that rhymes with P, and that stands for promise. A promise was made to a boy 68 years ago, that he would have an opportunity to succeed. That was that promise then. It's the same promise we're working so hard today to do. Promise these children, all of them, these are all our children, promise them an opportunity to succeed. And when they do, then we will profit by that success. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me take that little journey in front of everybody. Appreciate it. Over and out.
Thank you, Breon, and thank you, Lincoln Elementary.